Time being seven o'clock. I would like to call the regular scheduled council meeting of Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two to order. If you'd all please stand and face the flag and repeat after me. First item of business tonight is public input. Any citizen at this time can speak on an agenda or non-agenda item for a period of three minutes. Like to extend your time to speak. The city council may by consensus allow further time. Is there anybody here that would like to speak under citizens' appearance? Hearing none, we will go to staff and mayor and council report. Counsel, I have two things tonight to report and read. First of all, as some of you may know, I did not know him, Charlie Nichols. A former council member passed away two weeks ago. So we keep his family in our prayers. I know some of you served with him. Steve did, of course, former mayor did. So I did not personally know him, but we keep them in our prayers. Counsel, I'd like to read something tonight that I had drafted up to kind of let everybody know where the city's position stands. As you all may be aware, may have been made aware. Certain allegations have been made concerning the leadership of the emergency service district, number one of Denton County. Specifically, the Federal Bureau of Investigations has arrested former fire chief Mac Holenberger on charges of fraud and misappropriation of funds from the district and/or the employee pension fund. We would emphasize that the district is is a separate and distinct legal entity, which operates independently of the town. While these matters are of serious concerns concern to our citizens as taxpayers of the district, we do not have any direct supervision or control over the governance or or operational aspect of the fiscal or emergency service provided. We were unaware of any of the facts or circumstances which have led to these charges. We shall continue to apprise you of any development which would warrant action by us. We have received assurance from the president of the E S D, number one, board that operations will continue and it will strive to provide the quality of service which we have grown to expect. We would also remind you and our citizens that any speculation or opinions about these affairs are unwarranted and would undermine the fine men and women of the district as they serve our emergency service needs. Also, tonight, we have our our current chief, he's our interim chief, is in the house tonight, and our fire marshal. A new chief comes on January first, Chief Vaughn from Carrollton. So we're looking forward, but we know that as our department as a whole, they are an extremely fine group of individuals. So we have had citizens go and speak at district meetings, which may have not have been the smartest thing to do at the time. So I felt it was need to update the town where we we stand as as a council. Any comments, counsel?
Ron, your comments are on point, and I want to make a very, very clear point. I am a lawyer and I understand very clearly. We can have citizens in this town who have views as to what happened, what should be the course of action. And at the end of the day, folks, this is a serious, serious federal investigation. And you know what? Let the process work. Whatever happens, happens. But Ron said it right, that he set out what the the relationship is between our town and all the member towns of the 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 fire district. And let the process work. And anybody that wants to stand up and say this and that, no, let the process work.
In January Copper Canyon, last January, we hosted the mayor's crime prevention. As you know, Governor Abbott was our guest speaker. The the event's purpose is to have all the Denton County mayors, fire chiefs, elected officials come together this discussion of finding fire, crime prevention. It was a huge success last year.
Many years, and last year was really a big success, thanks to CoServe. They sponsor it and they supply the food and the venue. This year, we're having it over at the, where are we having it? The Crossroads, yep. And we're having a guest speaker on PTSD, on how police need to respond to people that have PTSD if they're aware of it, how to deal with it. And plus, we're having four of the larger city chiefs will be there to do a roundtable discussion also. So that will take place in January. A new security system, including cameras and monitors, were installed at town hall. Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Castillo, he installed all this, did all the work, no charge to the town. Thank you, sir. Big, big deal. The code of conduct, as a mayor, as mayor and council members, we all take an oath in the beginning of our terms to be ethical in performing our duties. This year, we felt it was important to address the three Rs in government leadership roles, responsibilities, and respect. Councilmember Johnson worked on the code that is designed to describe the way council members should treat one another, staff, constituents, and others that encounter in representing the town of Copper Canyon. It reflects the work of the city council and defines behavior, manners, and courtesies that are suitable for various occasions. The code addresses policy changes and clarifications designed to make public meetings and the process of governance run more smoothly. This keeps council people from going rogue, going out of their line as council people, and which we have dealt with recently. I know that our staff has been verbally abused in the past, and I, and this will stop this from happening. We had a zoning case that was a little controversial, that the Williams Ranch four oh seven was approved by the city count, by the council. There's thirty lots, they're in progress. We are able to, we were able to negotiate a three-quarter acre barrier on lots on the north and east side of the property to protect the neighboring landowners. Over the last three, three or four months, I have been working with landowners on four oh seven on the balance of the town center. There are three property owners that contains about under sixty yard acres, I believe now. We have them all talking together now. We do know that the two of them, for sure, they know my position and which my position is the council's position. We do not want any more lots on four oh seven. And we're, if they are, they're going to, they need to be one acre lots. We we feel like we're headed in the right direction. We have two of them in product, already working with consultants to find out what they can do with the property. So we should be seeing something, and the plan is to dissolve town center zoning as a whole. So it's out of our hands right now. It's in the property owner's hands, but they know where we stand. And hopefully, we'll see some changes this year. The twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one revenue over expenditure totaled almost six hundred thousand dollars. The council voted to move these funds to our reserve fund, which is a savings account for road projects and et cetera, undesignated at this point. The town received the second half of a federal grant in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. This money was designated for drainage repair and improvements. Two years ago, the council was able to drop the tax rate by two cents. This year, council was able to hold the tax rate at twenty-seven, seven, five oh. We should be able to maintain that. I don't see a reason we wouldn't be able to maintain that in the upcoming future. One other item, the the bridge, the state's bridge has been noted by Tech dot as being in disrepair. The cost of the replacement would be around one point three to one point five million dollars. We submitted the project in Denton County, to Denton County for the upcoming bond issue. The bonds were successful. So Denton County agreed to replace the bridge in Copper Canyon. Would if Copper Canyon would participate in paying a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the project, the town can cover these costs by the grant that we've received. Another item that we dealt with recently that I know was a subject is a stoplight at the four oh seven in Victory, in Vickery Drive, I guess it is. I had conversations with Senator Nelson, Senator Nelson, and I spoke. She made an application to Tech dot to and did push them to put us on a study list. The study list was supposed to take up to eight weeks. It happened in about four. I spoke directly with the senator a couple of times on this. However, Tech dot does not see it warranted at this time. So we have to wait another eighteen months before it's warranted, before they'll re-study it. However, Senator Nelson now might become the Secretary of State, and she still has some power, and she's actually going to be a resident of Copper Canyon. She's moving to Vickery. And so she's very after this stop, this stoplight. So we have some friends in high places that should help us get there. So, any luck? Just a few things I'd like to also bring tonight. I have served twenty-six years as a council member or a mayor out of the last thirty-four years I've, I've in my, since nineteen eighty-nine. I have served with probably some of the most brilliant individuals and some of the dumbest. But I could sit here and tell you the town of Copper Canyon is probably as lucky as you can get. I have never served with a finer five individual, individuals that have no agendas. They have no egos. We come in and do our job. We don't need any pats on the back for a, you know, stop sign or whatever. And I couldn't be more proud for the town. Also, our planning and zoning commissioner, Mark Page, has done a yeoman's job. Our whole planning and zoning group, when you look at them as a whole, they're just like this council. It, there's, there's nobody has any, any, they're just here to help the town. So I, I thank you, Mark's group deserves a lot of, a lot of kudos too. But our staff, none of this happens without our staff. Donna, Sheila, your whole group, thank you for what you do. And I tell people being mayor is easy here. It really is, because I have a Donna and I have a Sheila, so it's real easy. And I have a great council, so my job is real simple. I just have to kiss babies and make nice. Sue tells me I need to make nice more often. But anyway, thanks to staff, thank Mark P and Z, and all the board members of B O A, et cetera. Also, Reist Across America, it happens this Saturday. I attended last year and represented the town this year. Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Castillo is going to represent the town and also be at Reist Across America. At Chin Chapel, probably about ten or eleven at Chin Chapel?
The, it starts at eleven o'clock at the Flower Mound Presbyterian Cemetery. And then after that ceremony, we'll be coming over to Chin Chapel to lay the reeds here.
That's all I have, counsel, as far as my reports and my update on the town. Any, if there's anything I missed, please let me know. Not, I will. We have staff report, cross timber, water supply, corporation, have anything?
Yes, it is on, it's green. Okay, so what I'm going to talk about is more kind of water conservation, water usage. So we had a meeting with upper Trinity, and I apologize for me expanding the graph there. But on the far ends, the very top line is ninety million gallons a day. So you can count down ninety, eighty, seventy. So one of the things upper train talked about, your shaded areas, your two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-two average, daily average. And what, kind of what happened when we had to go into phase three here is we call it the perfect storm. You had lots of people moving in from out of state into Texas. We were already in a drought. All of a sudden, we got even more, you know, sunshine and heat. We ended up having two wells go down, and then upper Trinity, as you can see, the peaks as much as eighty million gallons a day. And that is, that is upper Trinity's max amount. So they're still in their stage one, which is our stage two right now. But they're, they are worried about having enough water for summertime too. Or we're going to have, we might have to go back into stage three again if we don't start conserving now. So they wanted me to come talk to all the towns. One of the biggest things, an average homeowner uses about three to four thousand gallons a month. The average home, our average homeowner uses fifteen thousand gallons a month. And eighty-two percent of that goes on the landscape. So that's where, as a town, maybe you guys want to start thinking, are there any incentives down the road that we can get for zero escapes or something? I mean, because I mean, it's not a very uncommon thing for, we have homeowners who come in and pay thousand dollar order bills in this drop of a hat. So if they have the money to pay it, but at some point, water is going to run out. And we're, we are upgrading our wells, we're getting, trying to prepare for the future. But I mean, if we have peaks of seventy, eighty, you know, upper Trinity, or if we have something go down like the wells that happened from the lightning storms, and we can only buy, you know, we buy, we can buy a minimum of five hundred thousand gallons a day, and we can buy a maximum of three point two million gallons a day. After three point two, they shut us down. And if we don't have water, then we don't have water. So that's just something upper train wanted me to try to talk to, because I, I just think until we get the towns or something thinking, how do we offer incentives for zero escape? Because everything's one acre, two acres, three acres, sure. Well, when these people are watering all of those acres, because they love that beautiful two acres of green grass, that is a lot of water. And like I said, not uncommon for some people to have a hundred thousand gallons a month, your usage. And that's where we've got to somehow incentivize that to get that down. Now, we're going to be changing some base rates in order to try to bring that down as well, because the, you know, the more water they use, the higher they're going to pay. So.
I think Larry had a question.
So, so I think your comments are important.
Yes.
And I think we have to really take that to heart. This is not a typical community.
No, it's not, and that's why.
And for example, I don't believe that much of the water is spent on landscaping and lawns. You know, we have a lot of livestock in this town, whether it's horses, cows, sheep, goats, whatever. And I don't know what the answer is to that.
Yep.
But I would encourage you to look at, in in every town in your district, you know, how do you work with the landowners? Because, look, I've got cows, and they drank a certain amount of water, and they don't have that water, they're in, that's a problem. So I don't believe there's excessive landscape watering in this town.
Well, what you do, what we're looking at is, we're like at the individual accounts. We can see as individual accounts down to the hours usage. So that's where we can see that, okay, this property is using this much, this property is using this much. Now, yes, you are right with with livestock, you can't do anything about the livestock, they have to have water. That typically, it's, that's not where you hit it. A lot of times, it's the HOAs, it's the, you know, the Vickery's beautiful front landscape, you know, it's, they use a lot of water. It's these properties and, I'm going to say Boots Ranch, very beautiful homes, but they are big acres and and they kick it up. I mean, like I said, when we're looking at trends where they, and I get it, when they put the grass in, they're watering twice a day for sometimes as much as six hours a day, nonstop. And and then by the time they finish, they've used twelve thousand gallons a day, times up by thirty, just to water their grass in, which you know, it's a little excessive to, I built for twelve years, you don't need to water that much to water grass in.
Right.
But that's, but it's going to take everybody, even the homeowners, it's going to take the towns, it'll take something to where we can try to, because at some point, it will get to where every summer, we will be down to watering once a week.
So I would suggest to you, I think your point is valid. I think you ought to be communicating regularly with our staff as to, hey, Copper Canyon, where are you? And I think it's valid to bring to our council, look, this is where we can improve. And I wouldn't wait to do it once or twice a year. You know, look, we're all sensitive to, this past year was a terrible year in terms of drought and lack of rain. But it's okay. You can come here every council meeting and say, hey, Copper Canyon, here's where you're at, and here are what the numbers are. Donna and Sheila will be aware of that if you share that with them. And, you know, to the extent that that information is out there, I, I, I think it's one of these things, you take water for granted, it's, it's not. So come talk to us, come talk to our staff. And to the extent we can make people aware of, hey.
Yeah, and I'm starting to forward Donna, like, conservation tips, all that stuff that we're both putting on our websites. So like I said, it was kind of a perfect storm last year where all of a sudden we were doing good, and then it just went, I'll call it crazy. And that was, and a lot of it tied with the, all the new developments, the housing, people coming in. We had two wells go down, and we were trying to buy as much water as we could, and they could only sell us so much water. So that was the perfect storm, I will call it, last year. But still, the average usage you're seeing go up and up and up is, is time, you know, as more residents get in here, and it's fine. But this is not a normal town. I mean, like you said, you're a rule-ish kind of town where, you know, you don't just have the, I'll call it the cookie cutter homes of this and that. You have the large homes and you have, you know, and they can afford to pay the bill. And that's where we have to try to change that thinking a little bit of, instead of two acres of grass, I don't know, do we do an acre of grass and and an acre of something else? I'm not a landscape person, so that's where I'm just starting to bring, I'm just starting now to get out to the towns and try to talk about this. And I'm forwarding Donna as much information, and Sheila as much information as I get from upper Trinity to help. And then that's really all I have. Well, that's next, Cody. So I'm going to let Cody talk, Cody's our licensed backflow preventer and irrigator. So I'm going to lift that up to Cody, plot, and you come up, your turn.
Good evening. A few of y'all may have gotten some letters from me. I think Black Jacket and Abbott's are maybe the only ones in Copper Canyon so far that have received the letters. Everybody did receive the email back in September. It kind of said, we're starting this program, be on the lookout for an actual letter coming out to you. We're sending those out in groups of two hundred and fifty, and we're going alphabetically. So it's going to be throughout the four towns, not just, we're not picking on Copper Canyon or Double Oak or any of those. We're trying to be as fair as possible. And so Cross Timbers is, the state of Texas, actually, in two thousand nine, made it where you have to have backflow devices that have septic system or well on the property. And if you have an irrigation system, you have to have those tested annually. In twenty twenty, they revised it, and they are strongly enforcing that now.
Is there a fee to test this annually?
The, what I've been hearing from most of the testers or from customers, it's been about a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars annually for the test. Some of them are upwards of two hundred and fifty.
Who's monitoring us getting the test? How do they know, how do you know that we did or we didn't?
We are sending out, like I said, in two groups of two hundred and fifty to each home. And if you don't respond to it, if you just throw them away, it goes onto a non-compliance list. I can pull that, I can pull that report every day, I can pull it weekly, I can pull it at whatever rate I want to pull it. And as of last Monday, I had two hundred and, little over two hundred and twenty on there. And today, after making phone calls all last week, I've got it down to one ninety-four, I think, was what it was this afternoon when I left. And it's people that, a lot of people thought it was spam mail, so they were just throwing it away. And then when I'm calling them, explaining to them what it is, then they're on board with getting it taken care of.
So what, what is compliance or non-compliance? I don't understand what you said.
Compliance is if you actually take the letter, you call a backflow tester, which is on the website of S C Tracking Solutions. Pick a tester, they Yes, sir. Having a tester coming out and testing your backflow device on your irrigation, they will do all the reporting to S C Tracking Solutions. We can see that. And it, as soon as they enter the information, it pops up, and we can see it right then.
So is the issue whether you have a backflow device or is it something else? That, that's, I'm trying to be
If you have an irrigation system, if you have an irrigation system
Yeah.
at your property, you have a septic system as well, because
Well, okay, so most people in this town have septic system. It's either the traditional one or the aerobic.
Either conventional or aerobic, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I, I still don't understand, when you talk about backflow, what are you getting at? What, what, what is it you want to control?
They don't want the irrigation water backflowing into the potable water system of the house.
Correct.
Okay.
Because your septic system is a health hazard.
Okay.
If you're, if you have a leak or something outside on the, on the city main and it draws that bad water through that
Basically, it's a double check. The double check keeps it from checking.
Okay.
It double checks it. I have to buy these all the time. So it's a double check that keeps the contaminated water from backflowing into the potable system. That's what they're trying to stop.
I, I actually got a letter, so I called about this. Thank you, guys. I called and had questions about what it meant for me.
Yeah.
And then I, I don't know, I think
We, we spoke to, I think last week or the week
Yeah, and then I said, well, listen, a lot of people in town are going to be calling and asking about this, so can you explain to me? Simply English, the bottom line is, you may not have to be inspected every year if you don't have a black flow device that they have to inspect every year. So I'm on well, so all of my irrigation is, you know, self-contained. So there's no backflow, the bottom line irrigation that they have to worry about.
If your water meter, if you use your purchased water and it only feeds your house, you don't have to have one unless you have a separate well that also ties into your house because there's a lot of people who do that. They use, they use their well water and they'll have a backup meter with us. If their well ever goes down, they can just turn a valve. In that case, you have to have a backflow device. And if, even if you don't have an irrigation system, but if you have an irrigation system, you, state of Texas says you have to have one, no matter
Excuse me, sorry about that. Let me recap what I think I heard you say. Hypothetically, if you have a meter tied into the city service, I mean, the water service and you get water, that's one section. If you have a meter tied into your house and have a sprinkler system that is tied into the city water, you need a backflow preventer, just like Dallas everywhere else. That is to keep the contamination. If you leave the garden hose going and if something happens and it sucks back into the water, which is, okay, I understand. But if you take those two items and you say, okay, I've got a water service that I buy water for my house, I have a well which is not hooked into my house, I have a well that is hooked into irrigation or just a water hose or whatever, you know, whatever you got, then you do not need a backflow and you do not need to participate in this program. So how do you opt out of that so that you're not in compliance? Because I too did call the city, I mean, call down there and I never did really understand whether I was in or I was out, but I kind of got a better picture now.
Okay.
But I still don't know whether I'm in or out.
Okay, your purchased water goes all into your house. Goes all into your house.
Only in my house.
You have a well
I have a well.
that only feeds irrigation.
That's all.
Two totally separate systems? You do not have a backflow device and you don't need a backflow device? What
Well, I called your office.
When I, when I get this non-compliance list, what I do is I go through it and I know who has backflow devices, all of your big neighborhoods. The big neighborhoods, they all have irrigation systems. The smaller homes, like, you know, Chin Chapel or Estates or streets like that, not everybody does have an irrigation system. So on that non-compliance list, what I'm doing is I'm going through there and I'm taking all those and I'm actually going out to those homes to check that. And while I'm doing that, I'm doing a customer service inspection, which also has to be on record.
Of what kind?
Customer service inspection. A CSI. And when that's completed, it'll go on your file there at Cross Timbers Water and you will be taken off of the list of, you won't, you won't receive a letter next year. This, this year, you will receive a letter and you'll receive two because it's the first, it's the, it's the first year we're doing this and I'm only one guy. I, I can't go to two-hundred-and-fifty homes every single month and keep up with this.
I just want to clarify it from my perspective, what I heard you say.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you, we're not going to come turn your water off just because you're on that list.
Any other questions, counsel? Their towns are all doing this all over the place. We're running into it on pool fills. If we put an auto pool fill in, we have to, we have to put backflow preventers on it because it's contaminated water siphoning back through the system.
Correct.
Got it? Thank you. Staff report, I think you've copied everybody on everything, Donna. Consent agenda, any item on the consent agenda may be removed by any member of council for individual discussion or consideration. Counsel, anything on the consent agenda you'd like to discuss or not entertain a motion? I have a motion by the mayor, Pro Tim, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by deputy mayor, Pro Tim, all in favor?
Hi.
unanimous motion carries. Next item is discussion for future agenda items. Also, anything you'd like to see on the future agenda? I know Mr. Castillo has something coming up in January on the fire code, is that correct?
Yes, mayor, just, I, I want to take a moment again to thank interim chief Miller for coming out and we really appreciate you guys coming out here. Also, sitting with us is Captain Mon Nguyen, who is deputy fire marshal and I've gotten to know him pretty well in the last month as Larry and I have worked on a request by the mayor to get the twenty eighteen international fire code updated for our town. And that had been an ongoing project for actually over a year and for various reasons, things came to a screeching halt. We also worked with division chief Brady Beard. He's not here, but he was, he also had several meetings with us. I think we worked very well together to get this done quickly. It was only in the last thirty days that we were able to go through a forty-plus page document. The main goal for Larry and I was to ensure that any of these changes to the fire code did not negatively impact any of our citizens, current homeowners. We, of course, top of our list as well is the safety of the firemen and women and our safety folks that have to go into fires or rescues. And so those were the two main goals. We were able to achieve changes that I think everybody was happy with. I'm going to give this document to the council members and the mayor so they can spend a month in their sleepless nights and review it. The majority of the issues apply to commercial properties and things of that sort. So it, it's just very few sections. And what I'd like to do, mayor, is to have it put, if everybody's okay with it, once they go through it in January for discussion and action. I know Captain Nguyen is also, would like to see this code implemented so that when he goes and does inspections of new homes and potentially businesses or anything else, he is working with one document throughout all the towns that ESD one has to inspect. So that's the goal there.
Good. Thank you, sir.
So Ron, Rudy is to be commended for chasing this dog. I mean, this has been tough to get this done. Also, given the changes in the fire department, it's been challenging, but we, we've had good meetings, good input, and we think we are there. But I, I think somebody might ask, oh, why did it take so long? Well, this is complicated and we got to get it right for our town. And we think we do.
Got it. Anything else, counsel? If not, time being seven thirty-seven, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by the mayor, Pro Tim, second.
Yeah, I'll second that.
By council member Andrew, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.